Helping create jobs and grow prosperity for this region. So with that, we're going to focus a lot of questions on how do we plan for growth? How do we plan for a great future here in the Quad Cities? And how do we work with Scott County to do that? We'd love to hear your views on why you're running and what your priorities are for our region. With that, I'm going to introduce Bessie Bransgard, our Chief Operating Officer for the Quad Cities Chamber, who's going to moderate this morning's event.
Thank you all. Well, it's my pleasure to welcome all the candidates here this morning. We have with us Tom Sundebrook, who is an incumbent on the Board of Supervisors, Jim Hancock, also an incumbent on the Supervisors, Challenger Jesse Anderson, and Challenger James Laird. Please give them your hand. We'd like to keep this very interactive, so I'm going to ask you to raise your hands as you have questions, and I will also just ask for questions as we go along. But as you know, Scott County is one of 99 counties in the state of Iowa, and really the counties are creatures of the state. Their duties and obligations are outlined in Iowa Code. Historically, the role of counties is about serving as really an administrative arm of the state, maintaining records, building roads, providing courts and law enforcement, assisting the mentally ill, immunizing children, assessing property and collecting taxes, and conducting elections. And certainly, those functions are still in place these days, as are some others that have been added. Knowing all that, we want to hear from each of you, what is your interest, what's your motivation in running for a county board seat? And maybe give us a little sense of your background and preparedness to be on the county board. Let's start with James.
Good morning. My name is James Laird, running for Scott County Board of Supervisors. I have been a lifelong resident of Scott County, graduate of Bednorf High School in 1996, and University of Iowa from the T. College of Business with a degree in business management, and from the College of Global Arts and Sciences with a degree in political science. I have worked any number of various jobs over the years, but currently, I work at Deere in Davenport. I've been there for almost 15 months, and I've always been interested in politics, ever since I was a little kid. I tell the story, 1988, rather, when then-Vice President George Herbert Walker Bush was running for president, I had an opportunity to meet him. Some friends and I were able to walk right next to him for a couple of blocks as we went to a fundraiser that was being held at a classmate's house of ours. And that's what sparked my interest in politics. So I've always paid attention, always followed the issues, and now this is an opportunity for me to serve my community. As I stated, I've been a lifelong resident of Scott County, and I loved growing up here. I have two children that go to Bednorf Schools, and I want them to be able to have the same kind of experiences that I had growing up and living in a great community.
Jesse, why don't you take it next?
Sure. Hello, Jesse Anderson. I live in Leclerc with my wife and two children, two young children. And I work by day as an administrator for a family business in manufacturing, a medium-sized business, about 60 employees. And I also am self-employed as a graphic designer and marketing consultant. And I want to make sure that I get out there, votejessie.com, that's J-E-S-S-E. And the reason I say that is because everything you want to know about me or my views on Scott County politics is listed on that website. It's pretty in-depth, actually. So I have 23 points listed on there that I've taken the time to write on, you know, various topics, such as, you know, communication, technology, transparency, things that I'd like to do as an individual, such as record, keep a journal and archive, a searchable online archive of every vote that I take, and an explanation of why I make that vote. I think one of the main reasons that I'm running for supervisor, aside from the fact that I also have an affinity for politics, I guess, it's something that's, you know, kind of second nature to me. I studied it at Augustana College, political science and public administration. And so, as I've become more domestic, as I usually put it, and gotten married and bought a house, and I pay property taxes now, and I have children going to my public schools, a lot of my focus on politics has switched from maybe more popular national issues to beginning to kind of break down and deconstruct some local issues. So I've been following Scott County politics very closely for about four years now, and I think that I could, I think I could bring something to the table with my business experience in efficiency and project management, oversight. I like to study and research, so I'm a big believer in informed decision-making, and I won't be scared to really delve into heavy topics and do the research myself and look at real numbers and real data to make just sound decisions for Scott County.
Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you also, Chamber of Commerce, Quad City Chamber, for having this forum. My name is Jim Hancock. I've pretty much been a lifelong resident of Davenport and the Quad City, or Scott County. I was born in DeCorre, Iowa, have five children. None of them live here locally, unfortunately. They all got great jobs, but they're elsewhere. And certainly, I think that's part of your forum this morning, and something that I will discuss later on. However, I think what really qualifies me for this job is my background, and I think I positioned myself to help the Scott County Board out and as a team. And we've always been a team at Scott County, and I've been on the board for quite a few years. I started in politics when I was in business in downtown Davenport. I was on the Davenport City Council for five years, and I've been on the Scott County Board of Supervise for 20 years. I was in business for 30 years in downtown Davenport. I had a restaurant, Italian Village Restaurant. I also was in, owned and operated the Tik Tok Restaurant, and had a small restaurant that was called Gentleman Jim's Restaurant that was a carryout. So I have quite a bit of business background that I feel I can bring to the table, and I have used it in the past. And I can specifically say that because of these hard times that we're having today, I've already seen them. In the 70s and 80s, when we lost 30,000 jobs in this Quad City area, and unemployment was 13.5%, 14%, and it was tough on my business. So I've had that experience, I went through it, and I think that I'm a help on the board right now doing that. I just want to say that this Scott County Board as a team, for just this year alone, we've lowered our taxes. That's pretty tough to do, you know, in these economic times. And we've done it as a team. And some of the ways that we've done it is that your sales tax, as an example, 100% of that goes for a property tax relief, so that helps your levy out. Our debt factor is pretty low. Everything that we do capital-wise, we do as a pay-as-you-go basis. So we keep all the fundamentals in there. Ever since the downturn of 2008, every department head and all of our employees have lived by their 2008 line item budgets on supplies, which has saved millions of dollars. And that also has helped on our levy rate. So those are the type of things that I think I can bring to the table and continue to bring to the table, and thank you.
Okay, Tom?
Thank you. I'm Tom Sundebrook, running for County Supervisor. This will be my third term if I'm elected. I'm a lifelong resident of Davenport. I attended St. Ambrose Academy, and Marquette University, and St. Ambrose University, and I received my master's degree from University of Iowa and my doctorate from University of Iowa. I've been in a position of leadership for most of my life. Everything I've done at Assumption High School, which is a private school, I know something about budgets. I was responsible for that budget. That's buses, maintenance, custodians, cafeteria, as well as the teaching staff, and so on. So I know what it's like. As Jim mentions, in the 80s, when John Deere and people were laid off, J.I. Case, Red Jacket, our population at our school, our enrollment plummeted, and we had to make some changes. So I've been through the tough times before. My desire to serve as an educator and principal of Assumption High School, my last 16 years, I really was never, it was not appropriate for me to be involved too much in the political arena, because I served both Democrats and Republicans and independents. But my dad was very involved in the political aspect of the medical society, as well as for Scott County. And I was always interested in it. And when the time came, when I retired from Assumption High School in 2001, I was given the opportunity to teach at St. Ambrose University in their graduate program in educational leadership. I was still involved with the Quad City Chamber, with Rejuvenate Davenport, and things like that. And then all of a sudden, the opportunity came to run for supervisor, and I was very interested. The more I looked at it, the more interested I got, and I was fortunate enough to be elected. Certainly, my passion is to serve my community. This community has been very, very good to me and my family, and I owe something to them, and I want to help. And so that's my passion, to give back here. We have about, we have many things going on at the county, but there are four issues, and I won't talk about them at length now, but like mental health, economic development. We're going through the regionalization in our mental health and so on. This is, it's Lost Grove Lake. These are projects undone, not completed, in the middle of or three-quarters of the way through, and I want to see them to their successful completion. So I love what I'm doing. I think I have a lot to offer, and I look forward to November 6th, actually, November 7th. Thanks very much.
Well, let's start talking about some of the issues on the table in front of the Scott County Board. I would tell you, there was a professional survey done of Scott County voters in office that revealed that 61% of Scott County voters think the Quad Cities is headed in the right direction versus 23% who think it's on the wrong track. And frankly, that's, those numbers are almost opposite of national polling numbers on right track, wrong track. So clearly, I think our incumbents would be able to make the case that people are pretty happy, perhaps, with how the county's going. I'd be interested in knowing, starting with the incumbents, the one thing you would cite that is an accomplishment that you're most proud of? And then, secondly, the biggest challenge you foresee in front of this Scott County Board right now? And we'll just start with Tom and come down the line. Things that are going well, and biggest challenge?
Well, what I'm most proud of is, if you take a look at our budget, this year's budget, we just took a look at it, and if you take out SEC and the jail, two capital projects, about $60 million, our expense budget is the same as 2004. That's incredible. How do you do that? Well, two years ago, our department heads and our employees took over a million dollars out of their operational budget. We look for efficiencies. I profess that Scott County is the most efficient, cost-effective government that I know of. We have not had an increase in our insurance premium in four years. We have saved over $3 million in our insurance program. I'm very proud of that. So I think keeping a lid on our budget, on our expenditures, certainly, the problem is revenue at this point in time, and that's something that we have to improve. And that's why our most recent misfortune with the fertilizer plant, in my opinion, it was a huge revenue source that we could have used for our schools, et cetera. And unfortunately, we missed that.
And we'll get to that topic in a bit. Jim, again, the thing you're most proud of, having served on the board, and what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the board going forward?
Well, I've been involved in just about every major issue in the past 20 years, starting with the landfill, the jail, all tough issues, the joint communications. But I think the thing probably I'm most proud of is working with a group of people, and there's, politicians and government have bad reputations sometimes. And this community of employees that we work at Scott County, as Tom has said, since 2008, have lived with that budget and saved us a lot of money. Nobody's in the wine cellar. I haven't heard a complaint. I'm sure there are some complaints there. But to me, it's proud to work with that type of team, with the team that I work with on the Scott County Board. We have a great administrator. That's probably, it's hard to say that sometimes you're proud to be part of a government entity, and I am proud to be a part of this government entity, and that's probably my biggest.
How about challenge?
Challenge, there's no question in my mind. We have goals, but in the past couple of months, I've really recognized that economic development, if we do not expand our tax base, and we can only go for so many years that we can tighten the budgets, reduce expenses, at some point, we need to expand our tax base, and we have not done that. And again, I will bring up my own experience in the 70s and 80s, when we lost 25,000, 30,000 jobs around here, and there wasn't, the amount of taxes I paid at that point in time didn't make any difference to me, but the amount of people working made every bit of difference in the world. Because I recall losing 25% of my business within about six months, and we needed jobs, and we need them today. We needed them back then because I was in business. We need them today because I'm in the government, and we need to expand our tax base. And there's only two things we can do. You can either raise your taxes or expand it. And so I think that's the biggest challenge we have.
Jesse, how about your assessment of something the county is doing right, and where you think there is a challenge ahead?
Well, something the county is doing right? Well, you know, I've heard both Jim and Tom say that, you know, essentially that bills are being paid. When I read the county budget, I see terms used like, you know, stability and stuff, and I guess there should be some sense of pride that, you know, when we compare ourselves to a lot of other communities that we see in the headlines, whether it be just across the river, or, you know, on one of the coasts, yeah, we've been sheltered from a lot of, or, you know, kudos to the Quad Cities and to Scott County. We've navigated a lot of these hard times. Obviously, we've not fallen susceptible to a lot of the traps that we've seen nationally. We're probably a little bit more keel in that sense, and that's probably a good thing in times like this. I find it important to, I guess, continue that outlook going forward. I think one of the biggest challenges that we see today is to continuing to navigate through times of uncertainty nationally. I believe that, I believe in local control. I think that Scott County and Iowa in particular have shown us that we have a set of values in this state, in this community, that do supersede national trends, national averages. I think it's wise for us to continue to do that, because there's not a lot of other places, outside sources I can look at and really find any future hope or security necessarily. I bring up the federal government a lot, because, you know, we look at, we look at an entity with high debt. We look at an entity with low approval ratings. We look at an entity that, Senate that doesn't really know how to pass a budget right now. Whatever the reason is, are those the types of, do we want to follow those types of trends? And I don't think that we do. I think we want to hang on to our local values. We have a wonderful, we do have wonderful people in this area. We have got a wonderful economy in this area, lots of small businesses, lots of big businesses here that started as small businesses. And I think that's unique to the area, too, is that it's not just outside influence, and it's not just silver bullet type of, you know, save-the-day things or big corporations coming in to make this economy tick, but it's a lot of businesses that, some that have been in Scott County, in the Quad Cities for 100 years or more, and they started small. So I think it's important to protect that base, protect the middle class, protect the small businesses that are already here, maintain a diverse portfolio, if you will, of jobs and employers and employers, and do everything that we can to lower the burden on those folks and keep them safe in these uncertain times nationally.
James?
Something the board does well, I, you know, I think that the board has done an excellent job with the budget. Can't complain. They've done an outstanding job, so to Tom and to Jim and the other members in the board. I think they've done an excellent job with that. In terms of keeping property taxes low for the residents of Scott County, I think they've done an excellent job with that, thanks in part to a lot of help in terms of grants to local schools and whatnot. So we've been able to maintain a high level of public education, but at the same time, maintain a fairly stable income tax rate, or property tax rate, rather, for the community. So I think that that's a great job, and the way that they've managed that has been excellent. One of the biggest challenges, I think, that's going to face the board is going to be economic development. Jim mentioned losing the 25, 30,000 jobs in the 80s. I mean, as a lifelong resident of Scott County, I grew up here, and I remember people leaving left and right in the 80s. When I was going to grade school, a lot of my friends would move away, and their families would move away. More often than not, my dad worked on the road, had to travel and work great distances away from home, and we actually considered moving, like many other families around here, because things were so tough. And things got better in the 90s. But now we're running into the problem again of economic development, growing our tax base. I've got countless number of friends that I graduated high school with, went to college with, and every single one of them has had to move away to find employment, to find a good job that they enjoy doing. But every single one of them tells me, if I could find a job doing what I'm doing now in the Quad Cities, I'd be back in a heartbeat. Because I loved growing up there, I loved being there, I'd love for my children to be able to experience that. It's a special place to grow up. It's got any number of different activities, but it's still a small enough community where you feel safe, you feel secure. So I think that's going to be the biggest challenge, is bringing jobs to Scott County and economic development, growing our tax base.
Well, let's talk a little bit about the most recent project. The county was approached, as we all know and have read, with a project that would have required the county to rezone ag preservation land in exchange for an industrial use that would have generated, I think the figure was something in the range of $26 million in new property taxes over 15 years. And while the fertilizer project was certainly unique in many respects, it was typical in that it required local elected officials at many levels to really grapple with how they would assess the cost-benefit ratio of any economic development project. So I guess I'm interested in finding out, how, as an elected official, James, would you go about, what criteria would you use in trying to determine the relative merits of an economic development project that was seeking or requiring county assistance?
How long do we have?
Yeah, and we can keep this, we'll have some follow-ups here, I'm sure, from the audience.
There's any number of different issues that would be of concern to me. Just using the fertilizer plant alone as an example, I work in a manufacturing environment out of Deere in Davenport. So one of my biggest concerns would be worker safety. How is it that you are going to, accidents happen all the time. I mean, you can take all the safety measures you want to, and Deere as a company is excellent in terms of promoting safety and employing safe practices wherever we can. But accidents happen. It's just the nature of the beast. So that would be one of my biggest concerns, is worker safety. Environmental safety, what's going to be the impact on the surrounding community? Clean water, clean air, that sort of thing. How is it going to impact the local residents? Depending upon what the business may be, using the fertilizer plant as an example, how's it going to impact local residents in terms of Walcott and Western Davenport? Other issues to concern ourselves with, is it the type of, is it the type of business or is it the type of enterprise that Scott County would be proud to have? So there's any number of different things. How many people is it going to employ? Are those people going to be employed locally, or are those people going to be brought in from the outside? I mean, there's a very, there's any number of different variables.
Jesse, how about you? How would you, what lens would you use in trying to determine whether a project had merit and warranted county support?
Well, the first thing that I would do is definitely run that through the taxpayer accountability filter. One of the things that intrigued me, or I guess kind of my take on the fertilizer plant was this, and I hope nobody gets mad at me. I don't, there was some great work that went into, you know, facilitating that conversation, and I believe that people do need to have an open mind and look at options, and I think that Scott County should be, you know, have an open door, not just open, free for anybody to walk in, but still at least have an open door to where people, outside companies, individuals feel comfortable moving their business or their family here, or whatnot. At the same time, I think that when we look at it from a broader perspective, I guess, you know, things tend to become politicized in the media. And my take on it was this, is that, you know, number one, why do we only have to have the choice of a big project like that or no project to be in favor before jobs or before, you know, strong economy here? Again, going back to the small businesses, as I read, I do a lot of research on my own just because these things intrigue me. Bureau of Labor Statistics continues to show us that small businesses make up not only the vast majority of employers in this country, but that's where the vast majority of job growth has been in the past decade. And so the first thing that I think of is not whether or not I even like this big project, is are the taxpayers that are here, and the small businesses and medium-sized and even large businesses that are already here, being served to the best of our ability? Do we have an environment that's already favorable to the people that are here that have invested their blood, sweat, and tears in this community for decades upon decades, that have raised their families here, that have had paid taxes here, year after year after year? So, yeah, it's, in this type of economy, you know, there are two different types of folks out there. In the business world, at least, there's people that see cheap money, and they're expanding. There's other people that see an unstable economy, and they're holding their cards close, and they're hanging on to cash, you know? Apple has more cash than the federal government has. So that shows you one successful business and what they think about the current times. So would right now be the time, you know, we can always facilitate a conversation, we can always accept offers, we can always allow people to look at our community as a good place to expand and develop. At the same time, I think that the real gem in Scott County already exists here, and I would focus a lot more of my energy into trying to create an equal playing field and a lower burden on every business here as a whole, because that's one of the strongest points, one of the strongest suits that I feel that we have in our community.
Jim?
God's gift to Scott County, to Scott County would have been the fertilizer plant. This is exactly what we're talking about, expanding our tax base. It is so huge, and it was so big. It is the biggest thing I've ever seen in my lifetime, and I've been through a lot of projects. As a matter of fact, I was on the Scott, Davenport City Council when we brought Quanex to Davenport, which I felt was a big project back then. But this was huge. The fertilizer plant was a huge project. We did a framework for incentive program. When I say framework, we never did any negotiations with the plant on incentives. However, we did a framework, and that framework, from the bottom to the top, if we went to the top of that framework, we would have given the fertilizer plant somewhere around $76 million back in taxes. In the same timeframe, we would have gained, Scott County residents would have gained $86 million in revenue. In the same timeframe, huge money, huge money. This is the way we're going to grow. I have been around so long, I have never heard a person ever say to me, Jim, raise my taxes. They want their taxes lowered or at least expanded. And this, I can't think of a bigger opportunity than we ever had with this fertilizer plant. Maybe we never would have got it, but I really feel strongly that we should have at least brought it to the table and been able to talk about it. There is a frustration with. me on that.
Tom, back a little bit more to the criteria the board used to kind of look at that project, again, knowing it wasn't all the way through the chute, but at the stages you were at, what criteria would you employ, and did you employ, in looking at the merits of the project?
Well, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Tom.
Go ahead. Well, we're looking at the economic, it's, as Jim has mentioned, we're looking for revenue. We learned some things from the fertilizer plant. The things that we looked at when they came in was, you know, environmentally, we were concerned about water, we were concerned about air, we were concerned about noise, we were concerned about traffic, we looked at all those types of things. We wanted an opportunity to get to the table so we could do our due diligence. I respectfully disagree with the Quad City Times in that we never got there, true due diligence. We had a framework for our incentives, but when we got to the table, we needed answers to our questions, and we didn't get the answers to our questions because we never got to the public hearing. So we were looking at those types of things. We wanted it to be safe and good for our citizens, but also, we wanted it to be paid for, and we wanted it to be a revenue source, and it was. Something we learned from the fertilizer plant, you know, our zoning issue, we found out, ag preservation, and I won't take credit for this, because Clayton Loi brought it up in the P&amp;Z, when we were doing the ag preservation, it was early on, when Jim and I, Jim was already on, but when I first came on in 2004, ag preservation was established to stop the urban spread, it wasn't to stop industrial, huge projects like this from coming in. That was the purpose behind it, that was the discussion at the time. And we have regulatory commissions that make sure that the air, and the water, and the noise, and so on are taken care of, so, but what we looked at, it was, we're looking for revenue, at least I was, and that's, we needed to expand our resources, and this was an opportunity to do so, and we missed it.
I'm going to interrupt for a moment to see if any audience members have questions they'd like to interject here. Steve?
I'd like to do a follow-up on that. There's always been a wonderful working relationship between the county and the cities, governments and whatnot, and the philosophy has always been to, for the county to nudge, push, in a positive way, business to inside the corporate limits, because of what Tom is indicating, to do the urban sprawl thing, and I think, Tom, what you're pointing to is the residential, different, residential and industrial. My question then is, do you, do you believe, including the challengers, do they, do you believe that there should be a distinction drawn now as to the county being willing to enter into, in a more positive sense, economic development gain in the future? Should we be allowed to do the industrial type development in the county as opposed to only encouraging them to go within the two, or three, or four states within the county?
I think, well, let's use this project as an example, okay? This fertilizer, is that, okay. Generally speaking, I would say no, however, even when that ag preservation was put in, there was an exception in there on big projects. I didn't choose that location, and neither did any board member, but they had professionals come in and look at that location, and the reason they picked that location was, number one, for the gas line that was right there, the rail spur, and also that it was a remote location. And so, a project this big, you know, if the question is, should we look at that, I say yes.
Others?
Yeah, sure. I think it's important, you know, one, something that was brought up here is that we have to be careful, you know, when the county decides, the supervisors are there for, obviously, some level of, it's a, you're collecting information, it's a central point for information to flow through, right? And so there is going to be some planning, it's going to be a good source for information, it's going to be a good service for, you know, 300 people to come in and give their opinion on a matter, and listen, and have experts and people come out of the woodwork in the community, and business interest, and private interest, you know, just, just individuals. But, see, when we get, I think that we can overplan too. Personally, I do believe in the rights of individuals, I do believe in, I'm a big believer in property rights, I'm a believer in rights of the public to live their life the way they see fit, run their businesses the way they see fit, and I want to be there to protect that. When we have so much planning that we begin to create rule after rule after rule, the environment becomes somewhat bureaucratic, and that's where we see some of these points of contradiction come up, you know, and potentially even hypocrisy out of, coming from the government as a body, as a whole. They're saying one thing in one area, they're saying another thing in another area, and I know as a, as a professional, as a business owner, that that's one of the hardest things to do, is trying to navigate that. When you have different government entities from Washington DC to your stay house, to your, to your local offices, telling you, you know, trying to influence you too hard in different directions, how do you know how to get through that? How do you know what to do, and how do you know what the future's going to hold? So I think we need to scale back on that a little bit, you know, I had an interesting conversation, there was a lady that lived in Walcott, and something that she said to me that I, that really hit home, was that when the, when the, the ag protection was put into the plan, the way that she saw it as a property owner was that she gave up a little bit of her property rights, but in return from that, the government was going to protect her, you know, protect the ag land, because that's the way that was laid out. As this process went on, she felt that, you know, well, I don't, I didn't mind giving up the right at the time, but that's kind of the slippery slope, she didn't mind giving up the property rights because she felt she was going to be protected. Then when she didn't feel she was being protected, she felt, why am I giving up my property rights? So I think it's important for us to look at the overall effect and be careful that we're not building a house of cards, if you will, with some of the planning that we do from the county level.
Tommy, you had a question?
Yeah, yesterday's Times editorial suggested that, at least the way I read it, was suggesting that perhaps negotiations on deals of this size be held on the front page, and that reminded me of the intended purchase of the old grammar plant by Cannon Falls, Cannon Falls, maybe back in the, was it the 80s? And that, that negotiation was printed on the front page prematurely, and it led to the demise of that deal. Could any of you comment on, you know, just debate that argument, if you will, that to what extent should negotiations of this type be held in the public, versus how far do you get privately before you bring it publicly?
Anybody have comments on that, thoughts?
I think it's a delicate balance to find, honestly. I think that there is some value in public disclosure, for negotiations with regards to business and whatnot. More often than not, things are done behind closed doors, and, you know, negotiations are held privately, or businesses connected on the golf course, that sort of thing. With major issues like, just using the fertilizer plant as an example, there were so many concerns that there were, with regards to its location, and with regards to the actual product that was going to be manufactured there, I think that there should have been some more public disclosure in terms of, okay, this is where we're at, this is what we're looking for, we're actually in the process of putting together, maybe not necessarily releasing all of the details, but at least keeping people informed in terms of, this is step by step where we're at, and what we're looking at doing, maybe some rough numbers, you know, estimations and whatnot, but nothing specific, nothing necessarily that you would be able to nail down. And if I, just take a minute to address the question that you had asked previously, I think each one's going to be a case by case basis, in terms of what are we, when we're bringing in economic development and whatnot, I mean, how do we balance ag preservation, urban sprawl, that sort of thing? I think the fertilizer plant is, it's very, what's the word I'm looking for? It's very unique in that it's a fertilizer plant. I think if they were building widgets, I don't think there would have been such a public uproar. I think a lot of it had to do with the environmental impact that people's concerned about what they were actually manufacturing there.
Other?
Yeah, I'd like to say something to that. I would have to disagree with James. If I'm going to spend your tax dollars, you're going to get to know what's happening with those tax dollars in every state, period. That's one of my biggest frustrations, you know, I think that people are concerned with too much secrecy in politics, again, all the way from, from local government, all the way up to the White House. I believe in you, I believe in the people of this community, and I think that you're smart, and I think that you're discerning individuals, I think I am too, because after all, I'm not in office yet. Right now, I'm just one of you, I'm just a citizen. But I have all of the, you know, I've got the same ability as anybody else to look at the information, to do research, and to formulate an opinion on, based on good information, how do we as the public make a good decision if we are not well informed? And how would I, as a public servant, make a good decision if I'm not well informed? And also, I would say to that, is not only do we have to be, not only is it important from an information standpoint for people to be able to, you know, make a solid decision one way or another on something, but also, I've seen far too many instances where one of the biggest frustrations that people have with their government is, is the feeling that they can't be heard, or the feeling that they, you know, a government takes, you know, six months or a year, or four years working on something, and then you as a, as somebody in the public has, or as a business owner, whatever, you might have a couple weeks or a few months to make the same decision. That's not an equal, you know, that's not an equal playing field of ideas and concepts for people. And I think it builds a lot of frustration in people. I've told elected officials, even from other county governments, I like to carry conversations with a lot of different public officials, just to see what's going on throughout the state, and I've told people, I was talking to the city council in Cedar Falls about the issue, I had some questions about, they were doing a lockbox, they were mandating businesses, put a lockbox on the outside of their business for the fire department to be able to get in. And one of the elected officials said, you know, well, the, I wanted to talk to people more, but I had to vote because it was, it was holding up the process. And I'm like, well, you know, the process is supposed to be there to benefit and to aid the public, not the other way around. And why do you think you've got people so angry when they don't even feel as though they can be heard? And when, especially the bigger the project, the more time people are going to need to catch up. I don't expect every individual in Scott County, every household, to, you know, be looking into every project that's happening and following it, you know, with detail by detail, but with a really big plan like this, when it does move into that mainstream, and they do hear about it, it might take people a while to get up to the same level of information as the board, and that's one reason I'd like to put cameras in the, in the boardroom, too. Scott County on its website already has eight functioning cameras that you can watch that stream live video of various things throughout the county, but not a single one of them is showing the official discharge of public duty, and so I would change that. I want people, I want there to be good communication between the public and the government, and they should have equal information.
First of all, I, you know, I guess, when I read that article, their really main concern is, has not just been on that, but on other things, is total transparency and full disclosure, and specifically about some of the incentives and stuff, and the tax revenue that would have, we would have derived from it. I will stand corrected and say, maybe we should have done that, and gave people that information on the taxes that really we should have seen out there. Having said that, once it comes to negotiations, and the, because we would start out, we never did get to the table to talk to the folks about incentives, but we certainly would have started out with a five-year program, and maybe went up to a 15-year program. I would never, ever recommend that we do that on a public forum, on the front page, because we're just, we're showing our hands, so I would qualify that I don't think we should do that. And, you know, I have also heard out there that people say, well, what do we need to give incentives for? Well, it's, it's the way it is. I mean, if you're going to do economic development, if you're not going to do the incentives, you might as well hop on the sidelines, bury your head in the sand, and let some other community do it. Folks in Scott County, Iowa, we are the lowest growing county in, almost in the state, all the major counties surpass us. We need to grow, we need to expand our tax base. When I was in business, we had 104,000 people in Davenport alone, I mean, we are not growing, we need to grow our tax base. This, so, I'm sorry, I got off the, I got off the, the question really was on negotiation, so that's how I feel about it.
Let's, we're getting close to the end of the time, and I just want to talk a little bit more about economic development partnerships in particular. As you probably all know, that Scott County is an investor in business attraction, regional marketing through Quad Cities First, and to Jesse's point earlier, they are also an investor and very active participant in business expansion and retention through the chamber. I'm interested in hearing, starting with candidates, and yes, no kind of answers, whether you would be supportive of continuing to have Scott County invest in regional marketing and business attraction through Quad Cities First, and then in business expansion and retention through the chamber.
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes?
Probably no and no. Again, I value those things, and I just simply think that we have a duty to create an equal playing field for every business in the Quad Cities. I would like to take, you know, if we want to talk about influencing the market and giving credits and stuff, I just want to let everyone here know that I would want to give a credit to every single one of you, and not pick winners and losers, but to create an environment that's healthy for every single person, and I would do that by trying to maintain costs and lower, lower the tax burden.
Okay, James?
Yes and yes.
Okay. Other questions from the audience? Doug?
Have the candidates give their comments on the relationship between large companies like the fertilizer company, or John Deere, and small businesses as a generator of business for small businesses? What do you, what do you think about that, the relationship? Whether it's by goods and services?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we've got some.
Their economic interests in the number of right?
Well, and to interject a comment there, that is, one of the reasons, at least, we're thrilled that this plant is still going to be in the general area, because there's a number of Quad Cities employers already, knowing they're going to supply workforce or goods and services to the plant, even in Lee County. So what's your thought on, as Doug said, large companies and their impact on small employers and workforce?
Well, I think their impact is paramount, right? If, I've known too many small business owners who lost a John Deere account or something, and they went belly up, it was all over. People who are sales reps, who had one or two accounts that they served, and lost one account, and they were done. So I think it affects them tremendously.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
It made my small business work, it's that simple. I mean, I needed those jobs, those folks supplying them.
Yeah, we've got a lot of great, what I would call, you know, core or foundation businesses in this area that, and this is just restating kind of what you said, but I do, I realize how many small businesses depend on that, and again, I would just relate back to, I can't, I can't argue the facts that small businesses is where job growth is at, it's where, it's where our backbone of the economy, and I would say that it's more important than to, you know, I wouldn't do anything to run larger businesses off. I think actually the more important thing is to make sure that the small business market has ease of access into, to starting a business, that it's easy for them to start a business, that they can create those jobs here locally, so that, you know, a John Deere, for example, isn't going to get that service maybe from, you know, somewhere 100 or 200 miles away. If it's hard to start a business here, though, because those all are small business jobs, and that's the mentality amongst the big businesses, is they like contracting a lot of that stuff out, they don't necessarily want to bring everything in-house, and so the small business has to be able to start and maintain in an easy environment in order to begin to provide those services in the first place.
We're going to close by having We're going to close by having, well, I'll let you answer this question first.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I would say that, uh, the, the large businesses are vitally important, um, because if people don't have disposable income, they're not gonna go out and spend money in the community for those small businesses and you're not gonna get the, the demand, um, and job growth that, that Jesse's talking about with small businesses unless, unless we partner with those individuals, um, to continue giving people a decent wage so that they can have disposable income and, and drive the market.
Betsy, can we get a quick question in, please?
Sure.
Um, I'm hearing the conversation about we, we need revenue, we need additional resources and I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time getting my hands around, ten years ago, our budget was forty million, now it's over eighty million, so I don't see the problem with revenue. We've, we've fulfilled those, that growth, uh, by the taxpayers paying it. If the fertilizer plant went in, Jim, you said that we, the taxpayers had gained eighty-six million dollars, is that my quote accurately?
Paul Parker.
Okay. But that, what, what would, and Tom and Jim, what would you do with those additional resources? What, why do we need that money? What would you do with it?
Well, let's start with the resources, first of all. If, the majority of it would have been the Davenport School District that would benefit from this. And they, now, uh, they would not get any money from it because they give a lot of, like twelve thousand, eight hundred a student, whatever it is, it's, it's a formula they use. But they had the opportunity and this is important to me because everybody looks at me, that their taxes are raised and they come to me and they say, hey, they told it to me this year, twenty or thirty people, your taxes are raised, not from us. We have lowered your taxes. But the school district had an opportunity to at least look at this and say, they could mightily, because they're our, our biggest tax bite, is, is the school district. So, right there would have been a huge contribution to Scott County by reducing the, because they could either put it in fund balance, I think, you know, it was their money, or they could reduce taxes. Well, uh, I think they got a pretty good size, sizable fund balance, so in my judgment, they probably would have put it in the tax relief if they got it.
Todd, in answer to your question, what would we do with that extra money? Uh, our contracts for our, uh, three, uh, unions that we deal with, uh, show a, a two to two and a half percent increase in their salary. Plus we have, their salaries are step by step, they increase every year. So, uh, when we build a bridge, uh, the steel that we buy today will cost more in four years or five years. And so some of that goes to pay for those increases in cost.
Well, we're going to end with each of you giving us just your last one minute, I mean one minute, um, sales pitch on why you should be elected to the county board of supervisors.
Well, I, I can start with that. I, uh, we have many things in the, in the irons in the fire right now. Uh, we have our mental health issues, uh, we have, we, we need to expand our, our resources. When I say that, I mean people, uh, I mean financial, I mean technologies. Uh, we need to improve our communication. Uh, I'm talking about internal, external and with our legislators. Uh, certainly we need to, uh, foster healthy communities and when we're talking about that, we're talking about promoting, uh, mental health, we're talking about, uh, supporting, uh, health and wellness and we're, uh, talking about providing recreational opportunities like Gloss Grove Lake and our two great parks and so on and so forth. So, uh, we're in the process of doing that. I wanna see that to its, uh, successful conclusion. Uh, that's, would be my, my take on it.
Okay, Jim?
Uh, we have goals, uh, that we have set, uh, a year or so ago, but beyond that goal, one of the things that has awakened me in the past couple of months has been this fertilizer plant. Economic development is a number one goal of mine and I wanna, I wanna be part of the action that hopes, hopefully helps us, put us back on the right track.
Okay, Jesse?
Uh, I have to start with votejessie.com, J-E-S-S-E, and I know I keep pushing that, but I'm telling you, I think I have more information on that website than any other person running for office in the state of Iowa, uh, seriously. Um, and if you go there and you look at those points, you will see where I stand on, uh, myriad of issues. Um, I know that some of the things that I said today might make me seem like I am anti-business, but trust me, I'm not. I run a medium-sized business. I, I'm self-employed. Um, I think, I, I'm, what I'm trying to do is transcend a lot of the top-down type of policies that we've seen, uh, persuading our politics from local to national politics. I think, I wanna put the power back in your hands. You are smart folks, you know how to run your business, you know how to live your life and I think left to your own devices, you will do a great job at continuing to grow this economy. So please check out votejessie.com and, and, uh, twenty-three reasons why I think that you should vote for me for Scott County Board of Supervisors.
And the final word to James?
The last word, yes. Um, I'm running for, uh, Scott County Board of Supervisors because I've always wanted to serve my community. Uh, as I mentioned before, I have two young, uh, children that, that attend, uh, Bendorf Schools and I want them and your children, your grandchildren to be able to stay here in a community that we, we grew up in, we know, we love, have the same opportunities and be able to raise a family themselves. Um, I wanna give the, the people of Scott County a choice in terms of their elected officials currently, you know, we have five board members that are all from Davenport and we have, um, Jesse's from McClaner, myself, we're, I'm for Bendorf, Jesse and I, obviously, no offense, Jim. Uh, but we're, you know, we're of a different generation, we're younger, we have fresh ideas, we have things that, that we are concerned about, that we wanna use moving forward. Uh, the other reason I say that is 'cause he said I'm one of those old guys James always talks about the other day at, uh, the Hispanic Chamber. So, um, I, I just wanna be able to give the voters of Scott County a choice, uh, perhaps a fresh idea, fresh look, new direction and, uh, I wanna serve my community. Thank you.
Well, I wanna thank all the panelists.
Madam Chairman, may I say something real quick?
Sure, go.
Um, I may have a Davenport address, but I live in the country. I live on a gravel road, rural area.
Okay. So, Supervisor Kusak, so noted. All right. Well, I wanna again thank the candidates, uh, for participating today and more importantly, for stepping up to run for public office. It is, um, not everybody is willing or able to do this and we very much appreciate your willingness to be on the ballot. So let's give them a hand and thank them for participating.